To do it. We will be one of the first jury trials in Texas. There are many, many courts throughout Texas, judges I should say, who are doing zero. Who said, we can't have court, we're not having court of any kind, not even on the Zoom conferences. And we have been conducting Zoom conferences, trials. I suppose we can sit back and say, eh, would be like the rest of them. I'll see y'all in August or September or October or whenever. My golf game is not that good and so I work. If you'll consider designating on a temporary basis, worship auditorium, we might be able to try this. Sorry, we might be able to use this as a test run, not only for the state, because they're going to come out and observe us. But also as a test run for that civil case, which we now have rescheduled for August. So if I, if you have any questions, I'm sure Dan's already explained it well enough in that brief presentation of his. But if not, I'll answer, answer the questions. Thank you.
It sounds like me that Judge Armstrong and everybody else is just with all the hoops, do what they can and order. Cause I'm sorry, don't agree with. As Judge Armstrong said, some of the judges throwing at their hands and saying, see you later. I really don't, I'm sorry life doesn't stop. So I make the motion that temporarily appoint worship auditorium as a temporary annex to district court.
Of course.
Subsumed or restored.
Don't worry.
Second name?
All in favor? Alright, thank you Judge Armstrong, appreciate you standing on that. And so it's not to belabor you with anything else that I was speaking of, let me get out of your way. Thank you for your.
Well, let's go on. After school starts?
We don't, we don't know. The facilities director, who has shown us the auditorium and the sound system that we can use and the platforms and the the side rooms and all, said, he, now I haven't asked Dr. Bland this question. But he thinks it would be the greatest learning experience the students could have, to have it right there on campus. And I, I want to give another shout out to Dr. Barbara Beebe out at the college. Because we were considering the Fine Arts Center Theater as a place to hold it. And she's been wonderful, just as wonderful as Dr. Bland. But social distancing, as you can all see, and probably some of you are going to get arrested for not. It won't hold enough, that theater, social distanced, will only hold thirty-one. When you put people six feet apart and you can't get right behind somebody. So you gotta go two rows, you know, every other row. You can only get thirty-one prospective drawers up in, in the seat. At worship, we got plenty of room, plus have room for people to come and observe if they wish to. You'll probably have to sit next to somebody from Austin, because they're going to come observe us.
Sure.
Make sure we follow all the rules.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Get out of your way. Um, here with me just a moment, I'm gonna speak to you just a second.
Take a nap.
Okay, uh, do we have any donations to accept? Wouldn't be on there.
Yeah.
Senior centers.
Total fifteen hundred and eighty-five dollars in money on set?
I'd like to motion accept donations to seniors, citizens center.
Friggin', all in favor? Uh, we missed presentations and discussion, Department of the Committee and Board of Directors. Let's get right over that. Yeah, you all looked at those, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Just to say that we did, I don't want to say we missed anything. Uh, court to consider certification of additional revenues in the form of supplemental payment from TAC.
There are two different, two different lines. One of them is the additional claim on the ambulance that was wrecked in Lubbock. So the thirteen forty-one is the additional amount to pay for those repairs that were due to that wreck. The other one is for repairs to the accident on the extension office truck for two thousand two oh one eighty-six.
Do we want to accept those?
I'd like to motion.
We're making a motion accepting.
Okay.
The same time, correct? Alright, all in favor? Both cheers. Alright. Uh, court to discuss and consider golf memberships to the Skerry County Golf Course. So we're looking at some ideas on that. Met with Men's and Women's Golf, Golf Association, so on with Angela and Darla last week. Looking at some ways to incentivize. And one of the things that came up, it was. The way it came up wasn't really an incentive, but we kind of looked at some other ideas, possibly not just a one-year membership and not just a walk out and play, but maybe a, possibly a three-month and a six-month membership. Where there are folks that will come out and play for three months or six months. And if you're like me, you're a fair weather guy, you're not going to go out there when it's cold and play, so. So that came up, and then different amounts. So would it be, if, if we did offer a three-month or six-month membership, would we want to charge the same fee, a lower fee or a higher fee for each one graduated either direction? Darla had some thoughts on this as well, I believe.
I've, I've never had anyone ask me for a three-month membership, but I have for a six-month membership. And I think we need a little more insight from people that are doing this right now. We haven't been able to contact anyone just yet on it because it was just new.
Sure.
But we'd like to get a little more information before we decide anything.
Okay.
Or bring it to y'all for approval, to be able to do that.
Okay.
I have a lot of people that play year-round that are not annual members. But they still play year-round and they keep their membership year-round.
Sure.
Even though they're month-to-month. And a lot of those people don't have the funds to be able to put out that much money at one time to be able to be an annual member.
Sure.
But, um, yeah, it's, it's going great and the membership is increasing, so that's a good thing. And I believe more and more as people are seeing what the golf course is looking like, they will want to come play or, well, we've already had people from out of town when the restrictions were lifted. Was, word gets around. And people just like to play at different golf courses.
Sure.
I mean, you know, so it's been good.
Okay, very good, thank you. So I guess we'll table that for now.
Do you have a question? Yeah, I got it. Is that won't hurt the people that play, pays the whole year?
No, sorry, it's not.
It's not gonna crap, no, it's not, because you're still giving time when they call in, is it, the way you do it? They, they put a time they want to play?
No, we don't have tee times.
You don't have tee times?
We don't have tee times, they come out and play just whenever. We've got a lot of people that are coming in since the restrictions have been lifted. That, because there's not anything else for them to do.
Well, now, how long do they have to wait?
Depends on whether people are playing nine or eighteen holes. When they're playing nine, they don't have to wait for very long. But when they're playing eighteen, they have to wait a little bit longer. But I have a lot of people that are coming and wanting to play and are delighted that they get to get out and.
Well, if they like it, it, it'll be alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, it's, it's been great since we've got to be open because people are coming out and that's the only thing to do.
Good.
Okay, alright, we'll go ahead and table that for now. And then court to discuss and consider a combined fee for use of the Army and Skerry County Golf Course. Now, in these discussions that we were having with, with the Women's and Men's Golf Associations, I found out that there is, I didn't bring my notes on the name of that one. So next year, the Women's Golf Association will be bringing a, a tournament to Skerry County to be out at the, at our golf course. And it's.
I think it's the Texas Women's Senior, I believe that's Texas Women's Senior League.
Right, and they, it moves to different courses every year, but next year it is our opportunity to have it here. And it's women from all over West Texas. Since we don't have a facility out there for a banquet, they wondered if there's a possibility of using both that facility. It would be in August or September, we don't have a set date yet for this tournament. But they were wondering if they could use golf course and the armory. And if they did use both of those, would, would we consider combining the fee to where it was a lower fee for the use of both?
Well, this is next year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But it also brought up what would have, someone wanted to bring in a tournament and they wanted to have a, a banquet before then. So I know that we have a couple of tournaments coming up, but there are only one day tournaments, so I know that sometimes they have banquets.
The reason I'm asking is the last one, talking about opening various park run facilities. And I have a problem with the next year.
Sure.
But if you do that this year, say somebody does show up, wants to have one. I mean, the rub is you open that up, you go ahead and open up the rest of it.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's my concern, that's, that's it.
Yep. Three of those kind of tied in together.
Yeah, but that's my only concern.
Okay.
I don't have a concern with next year at all.
What are your thoughts on, on that, Larry?
I wouldn't have a concern next year, and I would recommend that, I suppose, both of us golf course would cut their fee, I would cut it in half. To rent the armory today, six hundred dollars, three hundred dollar deposit, five dollars per table and a dollar per chair. So if you split that in half, it would be pretty fair. The only problem is, is when Dinkie sets that tournament, she's got to make sure that we're available. And we, we rent that thing out a year in advance. So before you take their money, you better check.
Well, we don't have to give me a definite date.
And our maximum capacity with tables and chairs is four hundred and eighty. And I'm telling you, that's too many people in that room, so I don't know how many people would be there.
Right, we don't know where we'd be next year on all of this either.
I'm finding out from Herb.
And I don't think we have enough tables and chairs for four hundred and eighty.
Maybe you'll have to social distance next year.
Yeah, yeah. Which kind of leads into, and we can come back to that, but it kind of comes into opening various park run facilities. Question has come up multiple times, are we going to open the pool and splash pad? Which also leads to, are we going to open the armory, are we going to open the?
Talk about together.
Yes, they're all tied together. So Larry has said that they are prepared to open at fifty percent capacity if they, if it was voted on today to open. And that's the pool and the splash pad. It didn't really talk about the armory or the community centers.
We, we have opened up our restroom starting today. So community centers, armory, splash pad and pools, about the only things left that we haven't opened. Uh, the pool, I heard you say seventy-five percent, but now it's fifty percent.
Fifty percent for pools.
So, uh, the pool is ready, it's clean, we've got lifeguards in the wings, ready to take the training. We could open up maybe the end of next week. But that will be only open up fifty people. And if you, the mama brings her two kids, she's counted as one of the fifty. So just food for thought, fifty people in there. And it may, I may have to count my six lifeguards too.
I bet you do.
So.
How long a time period would you be open, because if, if.
We, we decided we were not going to open it up for parties, so we would open up at twelve to seven and have longer hours.
Alright, so you would open actually next week as well, right?
I hope, yeah, hopefully.
And then through what date?
We would probably close somewhere the first week of August, because school goes back in session the twelfth of August. And that's when we start losing, losing lifeguards. Because of this situation, we're not going to hire as many lifeguards as we had in the past. So really our closing date is when we run out of lifeguards.
So looking about six weeks.
Six weeks.
Open from twelve to seven.
And there's a carnival supposedly coming. And during fourth of July, it's too congested there, so we'd be closed.
Closed on those days.
Those days. Saturday and so, Friday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, so.
How much of a rub do you think it's going to be trying to keep it down to beside your employees, roughly forty people?
We'll just stop them at the door, you gotta come in and pay. And once we click that fiftieth person in, or if we have to count our lifeguards, we'll. It's, one leaves, one gets to come in. Now, we are not going to be the social distancing police, they get in there and all pile up on top of each other. That's just the way it is.
I just wonder, I mean, they need something to do. But I'm also concerned with everybody remaining calm, that you tell no when they're standing outside for three hours.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's my issue.
Yeah, and one other issue is, uh, the health department has to certify our pool and we're working on that. I don't think we're too far out of compliance, but that would be the only other rub out there is if they find something.
How long can you stay open? I'm talking about days.
Uh, if we opened up next week, we'd be open up five to six weeks. We're open six days a week.
How much money you gonna lose in that time?
Plenty.
What I thought.
I think it, I'm pulling these numbers off the top of my head. I think that pool runs us about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. And it's open twelve, fifteen weeks out of a year.
And we got how many weeks?
This time we only have six.
And normally, on normal years, you also have all your party rentals. And this year you won't have that.
I just don't know that that's, that good of an idea because it's tied to the armory too.
Sure.
And if you open that, they're going to say, why, I don't want the armory, which is a legitimate question. And then it's going to go to the ball field soon.
Ball fields are open, but nobody's playing.
Right, but you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And for six weeks and lose a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
How you gonna, is there a certain time, say, a mama comes in with the two kids, they can stay there so long?
No, they can stay there till they're ready to leave, so.
Till they're ready to leave?
I think it would be impossible for us to ride herd, hey, you've been here you two hours.
Some of the senior folks may stay in there from.
From all, the whole time.
Yeah.
What a fact.
I think, I think it's going to cause issues.
I think it is too.
The only way you can do anything like that is like at the trampoline parks, they have bands where you pay for an hour or whatever, but we've never done that before, so.
That's more money spent.
Yes, and then you've got to track and you've got to make, and police and make sure that, okay, all these people with this color, they're not passed to leave now. But that, I mean, they expect that at the trampoline parks, they don't expect that at this one.
I just don't think it'd be that good of an idea though, but personal opinion.
Hey, that's okay.
I just.
That's why I brought it to y'all. I was getting the questions and we've decided, the court has decided on every, on every other opening, so it needs to be a court decision.
I just see, I don't see it ending well in more aspects than others. Because if your mama and four kids, they stay there from twelve to seven. And you, you know.
Where are you gonna get, excuse me? For button in, you're gonna get people that's gonna camp out right there, eat breakfast. And then at dinnertime, they're gonna walk out, you know, and maybe when it, or closing time, however. You can stand there as long as you want to, can't you? See, you know, uh, that, that's going to cause some not heads, knots on your heads if you don't watch it. And you ain't got no protection up there.
I just don't know what it would be.
It would be good for the kid to have something to do.
It would.
I think it sure would, but you know, I don't know how you, I mean, unless you're going to har, har, armed guards out there. I, I don't know how you gonna bring them in one at a time.
Then you get into, voted to keep the youth center closed for now because of that, so.
I'll, I'll tell you right now, I'm sure, but we, words live, but. I don't think it's a good idea though.
And, you know, I guess you can get that stuff, although I don't much believe in it. But I guess you can get that stuff just standing around, can't you?
Person-to-person contact or direct contact for at least fifteen minutes.
That's how you get it?
Yeah, we could right now.
Me and Herb ain't never gonna get it, we ain't around one that touches one in fifteen minutes. I, I, then I thought it will, it'll do the win.
They're finding out that it's.
They find out a lot of things, ain't they?
Yes, sir.
That I thought.
Yeah.
Well, I still say it's going to be a fact.
Either way you go, there are going to be, either way you go, if you vote to open it, there's going to be people upset and you're going to have to traffic it and do everything. You vote to not open it, there's going to be people upset, so.
Yeah, it's going to make a complicated right, no way, but.
But I, I gotta agree with Dan, we didn't, we didn't allow the youth center to use there. And there's not going to be any difference, because that was the problem with it, which thirty-six. Yeah, and God knows, you're not going to social distance it, it's a little bit.
If, you know, as far as if they, I still think they can get it any way they want to get it, if they get it. But, uh, if, if it ain't open, they can't get it there. So, and you know, you ain't got, you got that many weeks. And like I say, bless her heart, maybe they bought some of them tubs out at Walmart. Got them in the backyard or something that they can play in for a while, just a little longer. And like get it and then go scoop, give it over.
Hopefully it will. I don't think that.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody know what the effects of the chlorine in the pools are as far as disinfecting?
No, all I know is what the.
The post is open, Big Springs is open.
Since you have to be constantly.
We drove through yesterday, the post swimming pool was full of kids.
If the chlorine in the pool would be.
At least a week.
A unit of ten people in the same household can be together, but if you bring.
I just saw kids in there the last, going to Lubbock. And then I saw Dylan said Big Springs was opening this week.
There's not, there's not like you could do that. I feel like they crazy mothers like that just wouldn't go. I mean.
And, and an aspect of that is we're trying to save money right now. And that's one way to save money is to not open it. Yeah, there are the pools that are open, we were just told, but we're, we want to be careful now.
You have a big one over, open, there's one over there.
I know, so we're going to.
That slab deal.
Yeah, there's, there's two sides.
Well, then, I'm, I'm, there's nothing else, I'd like to put it on the parks department, so. If I release that, because. I just, I, I see it being very, very bad, and I may be wrong, but. Let's hope that next year that all this is, all the scare, fright and social distancing and all that is, everybody's going, you know what, took us six months figuring out, it wasn't that great big a deal, so.
Okay.
Motion to that.
Yes, ma'am.
You stated that you would be saving money if you didn't open it, but it's already in the budget, the money's already spent basically. What are you going to do with the money you're going to save by not opening, where's that money going to go?
It'll probably end up going into the reserve fund if it's.
Go back to it, because they won't spend it.
Sure. Alright, I think we do need a motion on that.
At the risk of getting shot, I might motion, let me put it on the board, remain closed.
And the other areas.
Armory too? And is that the, including the community centers?
Yeah, they're all connected.
Okay, so.
Dan, I didn't hear that, is to keep it closed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The armory is going to get used.
That, that's possibly next year. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And we can table that one for now, here in a minute after we, yeah, so we have a motion, do we have a second? To keep them closed. Yeah. Alright, all in favor? So we'll keep those closed for now. Um, and then, um, until we get some more information, I just wanted to throw that out there for now on the combining the armory and the golf course, until we get some more information on fees, we know what, uh, the park is able to do. And then we'll figure out what the golf course is able to do on that. Hopefully we can get a more set date.
That's just a suggestion.
Just a suggestion, yeah, that's what we could do, so we'll go ahead and table that one for now. Uh, line item transfers and budget amendments?
There's one budget amendment, this is the, on the LA Complex Fund, the payment of the certification obligation for one hundred thousand three oh five fifty-eight that we did the wire transfer on. And there's no line items.
All right, uh, council paid.
Okay, council payable from last court to this court, and I wanted to clarify some questions that have come up. The accounts payable, every time we have a court, we do the accounts payable from the previous court to the next court. Sometimes it's not a lot, like this is three hundred and twenty-eight thousand six ninety-nine twenty-two, sometimes it's over a million because we are including payrolls in my monthly and bi-weekly in there, and any other bills that are coming through. But all payables and everything paid goes through the court prior to, um, sending out checks. And the registers are available in the county clerk's office for review, if anybody would like to.
Thank you.
Play bills.
I moved it major.
I'll say that, man.
All in favor? All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, coming, appreciate y'all being here. You gonna go over to Lance?
I'm gonna finish some stuff that's sitting on the dance, sweating on me.
Angela, do you know Aaron's last name? Miller.
A, A, R, O, N.
A, A, R, O, N, yes, sir, and then Miller.
Would it be very possible for you to, or?
Would you like a TDF copy or would you wanna tell, uh? Okay, um.
Thank you. Now I gotta go call seventeen kids.
Thank you, I really appreciate y'all. Mostly for me. Yes, ma'am.
Have a very great week.
Paper's coming out Wednesday, so I'll need it, like, you can go.
Okay, well, I, I have a draft version today, um, I won't have the original version until I can get Terry's signature, because it's on vacation this week.
Thank you. Okay.